Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three planning board meeting. Will you please rise and join me in a pledge? Thank you. Steve, would you please take the role?
Chairman John Curry.
Here.
Vicky Gannon.
Here.
Nancy Garbino.
Here.
Ken Christensen.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Yeah.
Christopher Zaberto.
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the draft minutes from July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Any additions, corrections? If not, I make a motion, we accept as presented. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is extension requests from the Somers National Golf Course, which is located at one thousand West Hill Drive. It's for site plan modifications on Town Map sixteen seventeen, twenty dash one, two, one, sixteen eighteen, twenty dash one, twenty-two, and sixteen thirteen, twenty dash one, twenty-three. It's a request for a one-year extension from August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, until August tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for approved site plan signature by the planning board chair to meet the conditions of approval, which is based on Resolution two thousand and twenty-two oh five in accordance with Town Code Section one seventy, one fourteen K. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. My name is Quentin Liu for the record. I'm one of the owners of Somers National Golf Club, along with Perry Denapoli, he's my partner. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, he's in Italy. But with that said, we are requesting a one-year extension per the letter to Chairman Curry. As many of you know, the golf course has been on the market for sale. And it do not have a buyer at this point. We have numerous offers and discussions with various parties, but our goal is to keep the golf as a golf course and not have it, you know, pursued by developers or any other people who have other plans for it. So we're really intent on keeping as a golf course a copy club for the community, as we've stated it when we first embarked on this project. So we do need time because there are a lot of moving parts, as you can imagine, when we're talking with prospective owners and people who may or may have, may or may not have the same plans and views that we had when we first envisioned this project. So for the most part, you know, people do enjoy the plans in terms of what it's represented and ideas behind it. But I think, given the circumstances we face in terms of the property being up for sale, there are some nuances that individual prospective buyers may have.
Thank you.
That's, and that's the purpose of the request.
Okay. Um, is there Dave or Steve or George, do you have any, any of any comments? Otherwise, I'll open up to board member comments? No? Board member comments?
Uh, yeah, I have comments. I want to pass the people she should share each, each of you should share one. We have a, I've been told by the society at Heritage Hills golf club has not lived up to agreement that they arrange with the society as well as I don't that they've lived up to their agreement with the town. Because as you can see, there is a lot of debris in that's left over or in there, some of it several years.
I'm going to give a copy to the applicant.
Yes, thank you.
What is the fraction?
I'm sure he's.
And can you give one to the, to the consultants?
Sure.
Please.
As far as I know, this land was not zoned for a maintenance yard or debris. And my problem is that this need, this area needs to be cleaned up. They've got piles of sand, piles of brick, piles of gravel, piles of broken asphalt, as well as old machinery and also old pieces of apparatuses that are attached to the machinery. And nothing basically has been moved. I, they did remove some of the tree trunks that they had done. But I think before they get an extension, we should get a further commitment for them that they clean up this area. They already, they have an area down on Fred's Way, which is a maintenance yard, is I believe that was used before for the maintenance yard. And basically, I would like to ask Quentin, if there's a, if, if they would tell us if they would clean up this, this area. Because it is, it is visible from the street, even in the summertime. But during the fall, winter, and early spring, it's very visible for all of the West Hill on Heritage Hills. So society was concerned that it hasn't been cleaned up.
Well, I, Bruce, I'll address your questions and concerns. We have made a lot of progress in the cleanup of that area. As you, we've had two or three trucks moved within the last two months from the area. And we've also had that, as you mentioned, a significant amount of tree trunks that were removed during the process when we got the approvals. So we showed good faith effort in terms of making, making the cleanup there. And our plan was to, you know, move forward with doing the rest of the cleanup once we got the project underway. But given the circumstances, we've hit the pause button. With that said, I think, you know, I have not been reached out by society on this matter since we've had this discussion last year. Not once has.
Which, which brings up a good point, and I'll address that to counsel. Do we as a board have the ability to instill conditions on a request of an extension such as this? Or is this more of an issue?
My question.
What's that, counsel?
You could say no.
No. No on the extension?
No on the extension.
It's, we can.
The statute says may.
Right.
The board, in my opinion, can, doesn't have to give a year or doesn't have to give any based upon what the statute says, based upon the consideration of the facts.
Okay.
My proposal be that we give them an extension for maybe thirty to forty-five days that they, that they clean this place up. Quentin, you know that there's, there's machinery there and that's been there for years. Because right now, it's, they're almost, they're almost disguised by all the grass that's growing around them. And, and you, you did at least Linda Whitehead said that we were, yeah, we're going to do the, clean up the debris. And that's debris. You might get away with the, the sand and, and the bricks. But asphalt, broken up piles of asphalt, that's, that's even, that's even a health hazard. So I just like, you know, I, I just want something done to clean the place up for the, before we give an extension, whether it's ninety days or a year. Can we get, can we get a commitment?
I mean, I, I could commit to getting it cleaned up, but you know, I can't commit to ninety days. I mean, there's, there's, I'd have to have people come and take a look at it, get quotes and things like that. But I, I just take exception to the fact that I'm hearing for this, for the first time now in terms of anything from Heritage Hill Society. I, I'm in constant contact with the board and Dom. And, you know, this is the first time I'm hearing this as being an issue that you're, you know, pursuing.
Well, this was, this was stated when you, when Linda Whitehead made an agreement with society that we didn't, didn't oppose the.
And we have made progress. And we, we've moved a number of items. I could show you before and after pictures. I mean, it hasn't been completed, I, I recognize that. But we have made progress and we have made a conservative effort to move those items.
All you, all you've removed is the tree trunks that were there.
That's not true. I could prove to you.
I've just walked on the property yesterday.
I mean, there's equipment that is no longer there that was there a year ago. I can guarantee that. But anyway, that's not even the point here. If, if the, the board requires us to clean up any debris, I just ask for more time.
Why don't we see if we can meet a compromise here? I'm not sure what exactly, and I understand any time. But how about if we give you six months? Because obviously, you're probably going to have to go out to bid.
Yes.
Get some people in, what's it going to cost? I understand.
Six months, I think, is fair.
And can you live with it, Bruce?
Yeah, I guess.
I don't, well, here's, I guess this is where I'm getting at. I don't want to put them on a time constraint that, that they can't finish because then we haven't made any progress. So let's, and to show good faith, try to give them something that, that they can work with. And then, I guess, quite frankly, in six months, if we don't see anything, we probably won't be as nice.
Okay.
I'm trying to be gentle.
I know you are. I appreciate that. We will make a conservative effort to, to make that area clean.
I mean, I just want to have, I want to hear the rest of the board's comments on this.
Yeah, just to make it clear, I'm not a member of the society. The gentleman who was speaking at the end is a member of both the planning board and the society. And I expect he was speaking on behalf of the society, which he failed to mention.
No, I, no, I'm.
I'm sorry, I, you know, I was embarrassed because that's what you were doing.
No, I'm speaking as, as part of the planning board because there was also, when we gave this, when we gave this approval initially, there was an agreement made between the planning board.
I understand.
And that they would clean up the debris. I'm not talking as a, a member of, of society. I'm relating what society has talked to me about. But I'm not talking as.
Well, we, we go around about this all night. Since it seems silly, if, if everybody's in agreement, how about six months? I'll start with you.
Six months, I think, is a, a good compromise. I don't feel that I want to put a burden on the applicant that derails their ability to move forward on this. I think it's a good thing. What they're trying to do in preserving the project and selling it as, as been described. But I also recognize that when you look at the pictures and you've now seen them, there is some work you could do, especially concerned about machines. Is there any diesel fuel left or anything like that? All, all sorts of things goes.
Understood.
Most work.
Thank you.
Do want it will be good. I remember the sidewalk, I appreciate, I'm sure you've done a lot of work. But just keep moving with it.
All right, thank you.
This is great, thank you, John.
Ken?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with that statement too. But just to go back, just for clarity, you, you, you gave a reason for not cleaning this up. What was the reason you were saying?
I don't know if I gave a reason. The fact that, you know, that these things take time and we have made progress. So I, I just didn't get it all done at, you know, in this window that Bruce has laid out. But we have made progress. So, I mean, it, it's just continuing, you know, it's continuous effort to kind of move, move it along and get that cleared. There's a lot of material.
I think I heard a reason, the reason being they, when they determined not to proceed with the project.
Right.
So that means, from what I was educated by the Jesuits, that if they were going with the project, it would have been clean by now. So.
That's right.
That's the reason.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I think, and I think, correct me, this is like a win-win. They're trying to sell the property. We give them the extension, they'll be in a position to do it a little easier. If we don't, I, I know the legal ramifications, but my thought is, let's not tie their hands so they can't sell, but give them six months to clean it up.
Probably easier to sell a clean product.
Bingo.
Yes.
Bingo.
Yes.
Rest of the board?
I agree.
Yes.
That it's a very fair compromise. And Quentin, I think we all wish you the best with maybe surviving as you are. If you don't sell it, we certainly, I think, everybody in the room prefers that it remain as a golf course and that it operates and, and, you know, is an added piece of open space and beauty to the community. All right? So if you're going to make a good faith effort, I think six months is very fair. And then you can come back, show us that you've completed it. And I think we would easily grant you more time.
That is absolutely fair, Bruce. Christopher?
Yeah, I, I think the six months is, I think for you to back to us for six, why, this is to only make the extensions? And we'll look at it again.
Yes.
I, I, I don't necessarily agree that this was the proper venue to bring up this, this instance. I think it's localized to the society, in my opinion. But to Bruce's point, this was a condition for the site plan. And all I do recognize that you have not started anything on the project yet, except for some cleanup. You know, I'd have to think more about it. But in that case, I will agree with my colleagues that the six months is reasonable for you to begin that process. And if you require an extension beyond that, show us that there is, is some progress in that or hopefully a full cleaning of that project. So I will agree and say six months is reasonable.
I, I have a, I have a problem with six months. I think it's, if, if you're talking about the project, the project may have involved gravel and, and sand. It didn't, it doesn't involve all the machinery and the pieces of machinery and the broken concrete cement piles. So I, I don't understand. These, these, these have been here for over a year. And none of the, none of them have been removed. And if you remove something, it, it, it's not visible to when I walk the property. So, I mean, I'll go along with the rest of the board. But the, you really need to, to clean it up because it is a major eyesore.
John.
And, and, and the property's not zoned for a maintenance yard right there. You have a maintenance yard down on Fred's Way.
I, I think I disagree with you, that it's always been a maintenance yard by, by down there. The one on Fred's Way was never really a maintenance yard before, it's just some storage. But the maintenance yard is always up near, right where the golf course, where all the equipment is kept in the building there. That's always been a maintenance yard.
Yeah, but not, 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 not out in the, in the field. If you're, if, if the maintenance building was a maintenance building, this is way in front of that.
Yeah.
And I'm just.
I can't speak to the, you know, the specific area in which maintenance yard is defined at the club. I know we've used it ever since I've owned it. And prior to me, five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, it's probably the same way. So I'm just operating under the current, you know, assumption set that we've been operating under the last five years. I will take a look at it, Bruce, I commit to you that I will work with you.
Okay.
To get this done. All right? And, you know, I also will say that I have removed a lot of equipment and a lot of debris over the year. You may not have seen it, but it has been done.
We know each other and I, I'll take, I'll take that as a valid.
John, can we ask that Steve Woffel? Because I think it's customary on applications for renewals and extensions for exigent matters, to have Steve go out and look.
Sure.
Sites. And I think it might be beneficial to have Steve take a look now.
And then again, do a comparison.
He can monitor.
Good point, yep.
For monitoring.
We'll make that part of the minutes, direct Steve. And I'll make a motion that we give a six-month extension starting tomorrow, August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I don't know the exact date, six months from now, but whatever that is. Resolution two thousand and twenty-two point oh five with Town Code Section one seventy, one fourteen K.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing, continuation for wingee environmental permits for development at Nine Carolyn Way. And these are applications for steep slope, tree removal, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control permits for the construction of a single-family house, driveway, septic system, and a well. The one point three seven acre property is located in the R-ten zoning district. Evening.
Good evening, John Correll for Mr. Mancini and Mr. Wedge. Since the last meeting, we had some comments from the public about trees and visual from this house. Red circles. Well, we had a tree plan and those red circles represent trees that are to be remained, remaining, plus the trees that are, we only located the trees within the area disturbance. And this area and only this area back in here, we're not touching any trees. We're, we're, those sixteen, those are sixteen trees that are to be remained in the area where between the house and the proposed house, the existing house and the proposed house. In addition, there was some concern about the property to the south with drainage. And we, we had silt fence. Now we've added some coral logs between, on this, next to the silt fence to further protect any downstream discharge of stormwater.
Um, Dave, you have any comments? And then Steve, obviously, we're all in a receipt. Mr. Carroll's memo yesterday.
Yep.
Response to your comments.
Yeah, we, we have, did come in yesterday. We've taken a quick look at it. And we believe it substantially addresses the comments that we have had and is responsive to the public comments that, that I heard anyway about controlling erosion on that slope during construction. The applicant has provided an updated construction phasing plan. We have some minor comments, but nothing that changes the scope of the project.
Okay. Before I hear a board member's comments, I'd like to reopen this to the public. If there's anybody who would like to speak, have any questions for the applicant or staff? No? Yes. Come on up, come on to the mic. You need your TV time. Just if you would state your name. Can I just, just cut the mic, yep, please.
The podium. John Sullivan on Gene Way. So it's a single family. I was just curious, is, is the size of it? Square footage, it's things like that. And you said it, so the septic and everything, her past is everything. The site allows for a septic because I know that's a big mountain of rock right there. So I was just curious about the, mainly about that.
Was it a three-bedroom or four-bedroom?
Three. Four. We had Health Department approval for, for the house. And we, we revised the septic system based on the new Health Department standards. And I gave Steve a copy of the Health Department reapproval of the revised septic system. And, yeah, we wanted to get the driveway up to, to, to help the slopes. And the house is about sixteen hundred square feet. You can see on the plan, it's not a big house. It's, it's pretty much the same size of the other houses in the area. Your house in particular, or the house. You can see that these two houses.
Right, okay. Like I said, I wanted to feel for what was coming into that neighborhood.
It's not a McMansion.
It's a single family. It's not, I know with the, what the state is proposing with anything close to a railroad, they want to put up, God knows what, you know?
No.
It's not a McMansion, it's a four-bedroom house. Characteristic.
Sixteen hundred square feet, okay. So it's right goes with the neighbor. That's the, that's my main concern.
It's a footprint, it's sixteen.
Got you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else in the public who would like to speak tonight?
Our ten?
Yeah. Yeah.
No? Okay, board member comments? And then if, if you think we're sure we can close the public hearing, but any, any board member comments? No? Feel comfortable closing a public hearing? Make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Feel comfortable having staff prepare a draft resolution? Seems to me, Steve, that there's very little outstanding, anything that is, you seem to be able to work with. Is that fair?
We're looking for a couple of little engineering fails to, to the plan is complete, but nothing that changes the, the proposal.
And make a motion then that staff prepares a draft resolution?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There goes your McMansion, Rich, Rick. Next on our agenda is Dynamite Properties, Inc., proposed subdivision of a parcel adjacent to Green Tree Road. It's proposed preliminary subdivision and open development area application. So subdivision of two parcels into three residential lots, access off of Green Tree Road through the town right-of-way in New York State DOT Eastman areas. And for the record, the property is an R-eighty zoning district. For the public, I just wanted to read something because I know a lot of you have been coming here to meeting after meeting. There's not going to be a public comment period tonight, but there will be, I just want to explain what we're doing. Where the following is provided as an update to the process currently being considered for the proposed Green Tree subdivision. The applicant is looking to apply Town Law two eighty for property that does not have frontage on a town road or right-of-way. The purpose for use two eighty process is to ensure that there is suitable access to the property in question before a building permit is issued. Two eighty A requires that the planning board conduct an environmental review of the proposed action and provide their determination to the town board for their consideration. At that point, the town board would need to consider the open development area request for the three proposed lots. If the town board decides to grant the open development area request, the matter would come back to the planning board, to the planning board for a formal subdivision application. At that point, we would do a site plan valuation and we would definitely have a public hearing for everybody that wanted to speak. So we are not tonight making a decision on a, a yes or a no on this property. There's a ways to go. It's going to leave this board tonight. I don't know what it's going to leave with, but we'll see when it goes to the town board.
Good evening, Michael. So Cuddy and Fader for the applicant, Jared. Good evening, everyone on the board. We've had the opportunity to review. While sewing up at the last meeting, the board had discussed a negative, possible negative declaration of environmental significance for the project and had gone through, I think, some of the remaining comments. And we had discussed them with the board about the crossing and the signage. And I think those had more or less been resolved. And I think that repeated submissions and some of the consultant comment memo comments have been now, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, been fully addressed. So at this point, in our process and the board's process, I know you have a draft resolution as to the negative deck. We've had the opportunity to submit some comments just on the recitations on ownership. And I think that, you know, we've, our position at this point is that we feel the board is in a position to consider, deliberate, and potentially vote on the neg deck resolution if it feels inclined tonight. Obviously, we'll be back hopefully for public hearings and further proceedings on the application after the two eighty A. If that's the direction we're going to head, hopefully.
Before I turn it over, I apologize, I did not acknowledge emails and mail that we got. I want to do this, we've done it always consistently. We have emails from the following. Gary Wheel, Diane Huslinger, Nancy Bell, Linda Kafkowski, Kate Mezzin, Alan Masterson, Bill Campbell, Jamie Mandell, Jennifer Felipe Zazo, Andrew Rowan, Jeffy Beaver, Anthony Tumassetti, Heather Tumassetti, Susan Shee Clot, Richard Stofel, Mike Matteo, Warren Linden, Sinclair Scott, Hubbard Lois, and we also have a petition with two hundred and fifty signatures that was sent the email. Sorry, I didn't do that before. Counsel comments or Dave or Steve? Before we go into the EAF.
Yep, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think you, you very succinctly summarized the process that the planning board has been going through as part of the deliberations on this action. As part of the materials that have been provided to you, your next step is, is to make this environmental determination through secret. That's the State Environmental Quality Review Act. As part of that, we've provided you with a, an EAF Part Two, which goes through each of the impact areas. There are, I think, eighteen of them that have been evaluated. We've provided a Part Three. And most importantly, we've provided you the Part Three narrative. And the Part Three narrative essentially walks through all of the information, all the reports, all the plans that have been prepared and submitted as part of this application to satisfy the State Environmental Quality Review portion of the, of the application. You have received comments from. You have received comments from Westchester County Department of Planning, Westchester County Parks Department, New York State DOT, New York City DEP, New York City DEC, New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. You've received comments from the Town of Somers Bureau of Fire Protection, Town of Somers Police Department, and the Town of Somers Open Space Committee. In addition to the more than 60 pieces of correspondence that the planning board has received, and just so that the public knows, each piece of correspondence was formally circulated to the planning board and to the town board because the town board, as the chairman has mentioned, is plays a role as part of this process. So as the chairman indicated, it's the role of the planning board to conduct the environmental review as part of this application. You've done so with the assistance of staff and consultants. The resolution that you have before you is not a, an approval resolution relative to the subdivision. All it is, is a resolution that that reviews and makes an environmental determination. And then, as you mentioned, the next step is that all these materials, if you choose to issue a negative declaration, all of this material will be packaged and sent to the town board. And the town board then needs to go through their own deliberations with respect to Article Two Town Law 280A dash four. So that's where you are right now in the process. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on the EAF Part Two or Part Three or the narrative, or at the appropriate time, the resolution itself.
I'd like to say, why do we call?
Ask.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a question for a point of clarity that I've heard now from multiple sources of the general public? This is a good venue for that, right? Is the Town of Somers in any sponsoring, paying, or responsible for extending Green Tree Road to the property line of the applicant? Or is this in essence just a right of way driveway that they're responsible to construct?
It, well, yeah, it's, it's a, it's an existing right of way. It's mapped on the town road, on the town map. So it's an official town street. It's not improved. And what the applicant is proposing is a driveway easement connecting Green Tree Road to their property. And they, just so that everybody understands, they do have an easement from New York State DOT that allows them to access their property across the North County Trailway.
Correct. So our highway department will not be paving across the rail trail to connect the property?
No, no. In fact, that's an obligation of the applicant. And I believe in the resolution, it also states that at some point in time, if the subdivision goes through, that there will be a homeowners association or a homeowners agreement that will be required for maintenance of the driveway access.
Thank you, Dave, for clarifying that for me.
Nancy, you have a question?
Yes. What are we calling this subdivision?
Green Tree Road.
Thank you.
Welcome in.
Yes.
Chris, you just mentioned something that caught my attention. You, this are, this is a public driveway or private driveway that's going to get maintained by them? Or is it a state DOT road that would get built?
No, it's not a state DOT road. The DOT is involved because the North County Trailways is theirs. It's New York State DOT. So they, it's under their jurisdiction. The applicant has to apply for, and I think they have applied for a work permit, which would allow for, and has certain, and the easement language also has certain stipulations in it about the crossing, about how it's designed and how it functions. So that, the driveway will be maintained by the applicant, but it'll still be within a private, a public right of way, publicly mapped right of way.
What is the county's role on the bike path? Maintenance of the bike path that they're sold?
I, I think that they're, they're a player in this. They, I believe that they probably assist in the maintenance of that in conjunction with DOT.
Is it too early to discuss the DOT restrictions on the crossing and how that's dealt with? The, the crossing of the bike path from the driveway? Because I've, I've heard something about a locked gate and, and I'm kind of a little confused.
I think that would fall under the site plan review, wouldn't it?
Yeah, the, the part of it is, there are certain stipulations in the easement, and I think we discussed this at the June meeting.
We did.
Yeah, that one of the things, one of the things that is in the easement is in the easement language is, yes, you're right, a locked gate. How that is designed, that's up to DOT. It may be.
Yeah, there could be a slight variation.
Yeah.
It's not going to, I mean, DOT is not going to put us, they're not going to make it any less safe than, than what's required. I mean, they're going to go through their own meeting and, you know, and consult procedure with us, and then we're going to report back on what that is.
Okay, fine. So it's really too early to discuss that. Fine.
Yes, correct.
And I believe that on the agenda for the town's work session, which is tomorrow evening, that same room, this project is on their agenda to begin discussion.
Okay.
So that should be moving it along. You may be back before us shortly.
In due course, they say.
I have just a very small comment, very small. When I was reading the narrative, and I, I think it was really well done, the narrative.
I'm sorry. Who's phone is going off? All right, thank you.
When I was reading the narrative, and it's really well done, I was kind of struck on point number 11, impact on open space and recreation, that it starts by stepping back to item number seven. And as I look at that paragraph, for me, as our document, I would really prefer that that paragraph start with the sentence, the subject site is privately, because I think it's, that's really important.
Yes.
Because this is discussing treatment of the site, open space, you know, animals and, you know, plants and how we flow through the air, but it is privately owned. And I, and I think it's an important acknowledgement in there. So, because you've got the whole discussion at seven, which precedes it, so a small comment.
Yep.
But you understand.
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with that.
Good point.
Good point. Excellent. Saw.
That's why she gets the big bucks.
I got to talk to you about it.
Other board member comments? So I just want to, for the public, want to reiterate one more thing. This is a draft resolution. This resolution is just for the environmental determination and the referral to the town board for Article 280A. This is not to anything else. If, when and if it comes back to us, then we will do an in-depth site and review, correct?
Yep.
Okay, everybody on board?
So no building would start tomorrow?
Nope.
Better not.
No shovel would be in the ground either. Does the board feel comfortable on voting on the EAF findings and the draft resolution? Guess we'll do them separate. Do we have to do two first and then three, or can we do it all together?
You can do them all together. They're all kind of contained within the resolution.
Okay. Oh, so more comments?
No.
I make a motion, I'm sorry?
The EAF on the website?
Yes, yes, it has been.
Yes, it has been. I make a motion that we vote on the EAF Part Two, Part Three, and our proposed resolution. And we'll do a roll call vote, if that's okay with everyone?
Chairman John Curry?
Aye.
Vicky Gannon?
Yep.
Nancy Garbino?
Yes.
Ken Christensen?
Yes.
Jack Mattis?
Yes.
Bruce Prince?
Yes.
Christopher Zaberto?
Yes.
Thank you. Once again, for the public, I would say tune in to find out what the town board does. It's going to go to them and to see if they're going to grant a 280A. That's the next step. When it's on the agenda, I don't know if they will have public comment. I don't know how that works. If it's a work session, then no, right, Jerry? Yeah. So if, just, just take one step forward. If they do grant it, it will come back to us. And it won't be right away that we'll have a public hearing because we'll be thrashing this around for a while, as I'm sure you're well aware.
Of course.
But when there's going to be a public hearing, everyone will have more than sufficient notice and everyone will be allowed to talk.
Well, we appreciate the board's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Mr. Renani and Tim, before I forget, Mr. Allen, Dr. Renani, we're going to do this neck application. And if it's okay with you, we're going to move you up. I don't want you to have to wait all night because we're going to have discussions thereafter. Is that okay? Would you rather? Evening. Oh, I'm sorry. This is the Dish Wireless 121 Route 100 application for a special use permit wireless telecommunication facility.
Good evening. For the record, my name is David Kenny. I'm an attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder here tonight to represent the applicant Dish Wireless. This application is a installation on an existing tower without changing the height of the tower or substantially changing dimensions of the tower. Is what is known as an eligible facilities request. We had a similar one presented for Dish a few months ago at 294 Route 100. It's essentially a similar application. Dish has found an existing tower at 121 Route 100, the Amato Tower, and they are able to locate their equipment below the existing antennas without increasing the height, and they can locate their ground equipment within the existing fence compound without expanding or extending the fence compound. So this application does come with federal law that, once you've confirmed it meets the six criteria, is an eligible facilities request is a shall approved standard set by federal law. But based on experience for Dish's last application at 294 Route 100, I understand the process may be to have a public hearing at the next meeting to inform the public of Dish coming into the neighborhood and providing their services. But again, the focus of the review is on whether or not the application is an eligible facilities request. But I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have. We did receive the comments from Steve Robbins. We'll respond to those in our next submission. I didn't see anything in there that was going to be a major lift. Most of the answers are fairly simple. We'll, we'll have a PE stamp on that RFEME. That's the FCC compliance report. The SA, the structural analysis, we'll get the updated version about the onsite inspection, the in-person inspection that occurred. There was a recent modification here for T-Mobile at the tower done recently. And then also, just as a confirmation, we won't alter the fence as I stated before. No trees will be removed since the fence isn't being expanded. There won't be any impact to any buffer areas. We will also have information on backup power. I believe it'll be provided by battery, but we'll have details for you on that. And we did already provide coverage maps, even though those aren't required as this type of application. I know that the town is in, seeking of making sure that they have updated information for the carriers. So we did provide the coverage maps for Dish Wireless, showing what the coverage would be from this facility.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll jump in. Thank you for those responses to our comments, just like prior applications for Dish. We have very similar comments, so we appreciate getting those resolved quickly. There are in our comment memo, item five, items five A, B, and C, that are in the town code as requirements for a special use permit that may not be germane to this type of co-location application. So it's at the board's discretion how you'd like to act on, on those items.
In the past, for the 294 Route 100, the board accepted the coverage maps we provided, and those seemed to answer the question.
I'm listening for some feedback.
Existing power with no change to the footprint. Dish has already presented their business model and the RF output on the published map.
You pull the mic a little closer, Chris?
Yeah, so Dish has already presented to us their, their business model, how this works, how this fits in. They've provided us coverage maps, right? Details to RF output and coverage area. You know, it's an existing tower with no change to the footprint, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so in my eyes, I think it is, falls into the criteria where, you know.
Look away those requirements?
Yeah, that's, that's my opinion. We'll see what my other colleagues think.
You see heads going up and down? Okay.
I guess my only question is similar to past applications like this. You're adding weight and a load to that tower. Is that, is there a structural analysis done?
The applicant submits a structural evaluation and the town code does require that that structural evaluation include an in-person inspection by the person preparing that or under their direction. So that's one of the, the comments that we have is that there was a structural evaluation prepared, but it's not explicit to confirm that someone actually went out and took a look.
Unfortunately, it's not streamlined, but they have two separate documents. One is for their inside inspection, one was for the structural analysis based on that inside inspection. So we have that document. T-Mobile was recently just here on this same tower. So we, we do have the inside inspection. We'll provide that report.
Okay.
By a New York State engineer.
Correct.
We are in New York.
I guess I'll make a motion and that we waive requirements of code letters five A through D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stay, word okay with we, yes.
Claims to code, you still needed to hold a public.
We still, okay.
On the special permit, but.
We could have the resolution.
Exactly. If you direct staff to prepare a resolution, we could have that for the public hearing. You take all of it, all that at one time.
Then I make a motion, we schedule a public hearing in our next meeting, September.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I make a motion that staff prepares a resolution to be presented at that meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you. I just realized, Jerry, when we did the resolution for Green Tree, I'm sorry, for, yeah, Green Tree, I never, for the road, I, for the record, I never mentioned the resolution number. It's, it's okay? Okay. Yeah, well, I know you went to the church, so I didn't know if you were going to hit me or something.
Oh, wow. Hey, whoa, wait a minute.
Okay, moving if it's okay with the board, let's move up. Our SEC Corporation, so they don't have to sit through discussions, don't know how long it's going to be, but it's a site plan approval for the parking lot expansion located at 378 Route 202. It's a 1.06 acre property located in the BHP District, and it's really for lot expansion and the installation of 12 new parking spaces to be used for overflow parking in an area to stow, snow. Anybody? You heard Steve or Dave?
I have no comments. So you, yes, you had a, a resolution before you, it had been, you had a draft resolution prepared slightly earlier, and then based on comments from, from Vicky, she wanted to have a whereas clause added as the last whereas clause on the first page relative to the applicant making site man, site plan improvements without going through the proper procedures, and that's why we're here where we're here.
Okay.
And then Mr. Allen was kind enough to provide some additional comments, which have been incorporated into the, the resolution, particularly condition number six on page five, that the proposed light fixture will include, I think, Mr. Allen, you put a blackened light lens, that means it's shielded, I guess, is, yeah, shielded for that portion of the light that faces the Himmels property. Right. So that's the resolution that you had before.
Any comments?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep. I make a motion and we accept resolution 2023-9, which is granting of conditional site plan approval, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control permit, and groundwater protection overlay district. It's a special use permit to our SEC Corporation.
Second.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, let's go back to our discussion items. I'm just going to let David, Steve handle this.
Okay. So the first one is zoning text amendment, community shopping district. I don't know if anybody from Erstet Biddle is here on the call, but this was essentially... Um, I don't know if anybody from uh, Erstat Biddle is here on the call, but this was essentially a petition that they had submitted to town board. They have um, uh, they were approached by an outfit called Wings Over Water. Uh, which appears, apparently is a local group. Um, and they offer uh, like swimming lessons and that type of thing for um, for young people and, and people of all ages. And so one of their tenant, uh, Somers Commons tenants, New York Sports Club. Um, they needed to kind of remove themselves from the pool that's part of their operation. So um, Wings Over Water wanted to come in and take the spot, but there was a um, an issue with the um, the proposed use, which is public or private recreation. And it's not specifically uh permitted in the CS zoning district. Now, the, the existing New York Sports Club and its pool was allowed uh based on an interpretation from the prior building inspector. And so in discussion with the current um, building inspector and with this and with uh, the, the folks from Erstat Biddle and Wings Over Water. It was, we decided, you know, it's just going to make it easier if the code was revised to allow for uh, public um. It's. Yeah, here, it, it's um.
Private and or public.
Public.
Facilities, including swimming, racket sports, bowling, golf, skating, soccer, and similar activities that I and Jay's veterinary offices.
Yes, thank you. Um, so basically that's pretty straightforward. I think the um, the, the, the matter has been referred to you because of, it's required under code. Um, it's hopeful that um, you can provide some direction. You can provide it to me and I'll provide it to the town board. They're going to um, discuss scheduling a public hearing on this matter uh for September. Um, so that's, that's kind of the background as to um why the petition is being.
The uh of private and public recreation facilities. Uh, you're giving examples of, but that they're not limited to that. What is, what is, what is, what about the possibility of having a, a water park? And or some facility similar to that, which may be well beyond uh the uh, the, 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 the area that they're talking about right now.
I, I think if you took into what uh, Vicky said, in reading the examples, what the types of uh, facilities there, they are so contrary to a water park that uh, it would be a illegal use in my opinion, the water park.
You, you don't, don't think that could set up an argument?
There, there, there's no way you can stop lawyers from arguing. Okay, but I think what the, these examples would make it uh, a, a, an understanding that the building department and the advice they would be given is that it would be a non-conforming use. Okay?
Vicky, can you read those again for us?
Sure.
Bruce highlighted that.
Private and or public recreation facilities, including swimming, racket sports, bowling, golf, skating, soccer, and similar activities.
Now, that, that definition is not new to the town of Somers. It's actually included in the adjacent uh, planned Hamlet zone.
Right.
So we, we just basically lifted it from that and are applying it.
Yeah, that allows that in the Hamlet zone or?
Correct. That, that's.
Allows that. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a skating rink years ago, back in the nineteen sixties in the Golden Place Shopping Center.
Hmm, yeah, I, I don't see how to, a, a, a water park is a, is an amusement park themed around water, not necessarily a swimming facility. I'm sure that argument can be made. So uh, while we can't, you know, use language to exclude a lot of things, you know, this.
A pool is not a park.
Correct. Uh, and there's already been an established pool based on interpretation, as you said, from the previous person. Um, I've been a customer of Wings Over Water. My uh, there's one up in Brewster.
Yes.
And uh, it's uh, it teaches kids how to swim. Uh, and so it's usually, in my opinion, what I've seen, pretty low impact as far as, you know, any sort of community disruptions concerned and actually might be a benefit uh to the, you know, to the residents. Is that we don't have to go out of town and out of county to, to get our kids trained. I don't know if, uh, well, we don't have a town pool, right? So, uh, and I don't know if the pools that we have in town that are public, if they entertain that. So that is one separate argument. I think this is a, a good usage for that area. And I would uh support the, the text amendment, you know, to include this type of business that's already established, right? We're not going to re- right. Reinvent the wheel, break ground again, buil- build a park. Um, I've, I've also used the New York Sports Club and I know the pool that they're talking about. It's kind of up in the back, you know, with, with, within the building itself. So I think for all those reasons, this is positive. And then uh, the other aspect is veterinary facilities. Are we ready to talk about that?
Yes, um, if you recall uh, last year, um, Somers Commons came to the town with a similar request. They had uh and again, this is part of the changing nature of the retail experience.
Correct.
They don't want to see um vacant stores. So they were contemplating some kind of a doggy daycare or pet daycare.
Yes.
And so they proposed specific language that will allow that type of use as a permitted use in the, in the CS district. And in that proposed language, it is, it specifically excluded veterinary offices. So now with this uh, language change, this would allow for veterinary offices as a permitted principal use within that district. And it kind of makes sense if you have
Good.
A doggy daycare and you've got a veterinary that's in close proximity, you can do a couple of things, you know, at the same time.
Yeah.
So that's, and again, it's, it's Erstat Biddle and Somers Commons wanting to be uh as flexible in the marketplace as possible to bring in tenants. Um, to make sure that they've got a viable economic uh, uh, facility.
I, I, I agree with Chris, what you're saying. I, I'm familiar with Wings Over Water as well. I was going to use it for my kids, but I didn't feel like going to Brewster. No, I think it would be a good addition to Somers, but just, just looking at zoning though, forgetting about the actual business by allowing this into commercial, I mean, into community shopping.
Yes, right?
Um. Where is it allowed now? In the industrial, light, commercial, industrial zone?
This, this particular use, it's allowed in the uh, Planned Hamlet District, which is right next door.
Right.
Um.
Cause we're, by passing this, we're now allowing this type of facility and others in this recreational, what do you call here, recreational facilities? Public or private?
Just, just in this district though.
In the, in the.
In the CS district.
Yeah, and, and that's, we don't have, have, how many?
Yes, yeah, so there is other CS.
Big and Dale.
Right. It's just this.
Just this one.
Just the one, right? So if, 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 correct me if I'm wrong, Dave from council. If uh, another project wanted to change zoning into a CS to facilitate this, let's say, let's say an OLI
Right.
Switch and become, that's a whole other process.
Right.
Has to get.
Have to get a zoning change.
Right, it would have, and that's like a big bureaucratic process.
Right.
Within the town. So I don't think, I get your point, right? Like, hey, what, what floodgate are we opening?
Right.
Allow uh unfettered uh pools being built for commercial purposes throughout. And it's not, we're not. It's just, it's the one district that Erstat Biddle controls, right, for now. Um, it's the shopping center where the Home Goods was, right? I'm getting this right?
Well, yes, it's, it's the same, the, yeah, the Somers Commons is, that's
Right.
That's the CS district.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's the district in, in of itself. I, I, point is valid, except it doesn't necessarily apply in the sense that we're, we're not opening a.
Luckily, we're protected because it's the only one.
Right, exactly.
I didn't, I didn't realize.
I know what you're saying. Yeah, but that makes a big difference. Yeah. Thank goodness. Yeah.
So that's
Okay.
It's good, but that's a, that's a good point because I, I, you know, I'm always concerned about that too, right? When you, when you have one, one action, there's some other reaction or you create a loophole or something that now can get exploited.
Right.
We need to look at that before we just say, hey, this is great. Let's, let's do this, you know? Um, so that's good that, you know, I think that's part of our responsibility to be diligent and in giving opinions to the town board who has the authority to change legislation, right? Uh, it's good government. It's uh, it's, it's the right way to look at it, be analytical.
Yep.
Hey, this is why I agree or disagree with that.
Yeah, and that, that, that's a, you bring up a very good point because this issue, the same issue came up. If you remember with the um uh, the property that just got rezoned on Route one hundred for the self-storage.
Right, right.
And they rezoned it to OLI and they, and they allowed for self-storage as a permitted use in the OLI. And Nancy, I think, brought up the issue that there is another OLI property, um Jilco.
Jilco, yeah.
Uh, which is oil. And then also, we discussed, this, this issue is coming up again tomorrow night with the reasoning for the properties in and around um, Level Street. Uh, that are part of the comprehensive plan and part of that, those recommendations of comprehensive plan that those, there were two properties, I think, two or three properties that would be rezoned to OLI. And, and so as a result of your comments, just like this discussion now, the town board was made aware of kind of the implication, the bigger implications. So this is a very valuable discussion to have to relay, relay to the town board.
Yeah, great.
I, I think if I'm hearing right, we're pretty much all in favor of, of this.
Yeah, definitely. Just one question.
Sure.
It's really, i- it's important for us to support um, retail shopping centers, flexibility to adjust what's available, what, what can be done there so that we don't end up with dark stores.
Right.
And I like the idea of racket sports. I could see a big space now being converted like indoor pickleball or something like that. I don't play it, but I could, I'm going to do that all year round. It just seems to speak to that. Um, and I apologize for not knowing the answer to this. Veterinary uses, I remember the daycare suggestion, veterinary offices. Um. As is, are they thinking at all, is there any reference at all to like other dog veterinary things like um, grooming facility?
Well, the, the doggy daycare that we talked about specifically has that in it that it allows.
Allows, okay. Would a grooming be allowed outside of a doggy daycare? Or is, is as that text is written, is it only allowed within the, I'm just thinking in terms of discreet businesses
Mm-hmm.
That kind of fall from with dog ownership. Yeah, vets, daycare and grooming. It's kind of the great triangle of life.
Yeah, typically, um.
You must be a dog owner. You're laughing. Yes.
Yeah.
A canine tripper.
I have, I have two myself, so I, yes, I'm, I'm a partial expert on uh, on dogs. So typically, um, like the doggy daycare, it when you go in, it's not only just daycare, but also they would sell pet products. Um, and actually, uh, I think Tractor Supply has some ability, you know, as part of their retail operation, they may have grooming. I'd have to go back. Yeah.
Okay.
And I know they had, yeah, and some of it, yeah, it's like pet washing. That's the other big thing. Um, that's big is you can, you could rent out a space to wash your pet. And it comes with all the um, you know, the, the soap, what are the?
I guess I'm saying if the applicant for this petition has any thought that they wanted to be able to have a non-attached dog grooming.
Hmm.
And if they wanted to include that now as opposed to coming back again at later expense. Maybe ask them if that's something they want to do. If it isn't somehow also explicitly covered somewhere else where it doesn't have to be a part of that, just, just to put it out.
Yep.
Because why should it, it would seem to flow as a possible thing and you don't want the current original. Otherwise, it looks great to me.
Most, most, most all dog grooming places are indoors. They, they don't have, they're not outdoors. You, you don't want to, you don't want to have a dog outdoors and try to do something to.
No, I wasn't suggesting dog grooming outdoors.
Yeah, okay.
No.
Thought you were talking.
No, she, I think she was just saying, why not present this to them now so they can all be covered at the same time?
Exactly.
Right, because they have.
Not already, if it's not already covered, yes.
Yes, not somehow already covered.
Okay.
Ask them.
Right, nice. So then I guess you should send a letter um to the, to the planning board, to the town board.
Right.
Showing our support. Okay, very good. And then the last is the municipal facilities.
So this is similar uh to the last item. Uh, the, the, this is on an initiation by uh, the town, sent by, essentially by the planning office. So uh, the, it, you know that the town has been actively trying to keep the state police headquarters in town.
Right.
Um, so they're, they're working with uh, the fire district. They're working with the um, the state police. And the, the, one of the issues that came up was, all right, well, they've got to go through site plan at some point if they want to build a new facility. And we started looking at the zoning and a state police, you know, and is, is a municipal facility, but it's not allowed in the residential districts. Which means if they have, would have to get uh, a variance, a use variance on the zoning board, which can be somewhat prob- yeah, could be impossible, very problematic. As much as, as the town would like to keep state police, it just becomes a, an issue. So I went through and I looked at a, a number of the other um, municipal facilities, essentially fire stations, the library. Um. This building uh, and the police headquarters. And in each instance, the, they're all in a residential district or in the BHP. And so the, the question is, all right, let's make municipal facilities permitted principal uses in all of these districts. And then that just kind of clears up the whole issue. And it just makes it uh, from an administrative standpoint.
Yeah.
Much easier for applications like these. These are municipal buildings and municipal uses. They, they, and a lot of communities, Jerry, correct me wrong. Municipal facilities are basically permitted everywhere.
Hmm.
Um, so that's the petition currently before the uh, the town board is to allow for municipal facilities as permitted principal uses in one, two, or all the residential districts. And then I, I believe it's the um, the office districts. Um. The commercial office district, the, like the Pepsi site, the IBM site. Uh, so that's really the, the, um, the purpose behind the proposed amendment.
Kind of a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, would you happen to know, this, by the way, isn't anything new. I don't mean the request to change the zoning to permit it. But it's quite old, the plan to provide for the state police. In the original plan, the town had, it was going to be a structure roughly located on what was IBM property. I assume they're still looking at the same property. And it was also going to serve as a town court. Do you know if that, they're still going with?
No, that's not the, the proposal right now. There's a piece of property uh, just south, well, it, it's, it's part, it's adjacent to the existing police headquarters. It's owned by the fire district.
Right.
Correct.
The, the fire district is, they're going to carve out approximately two and a half acres and that would be the location for.
But it's just going to be the.
Just, just police headquarters at New York State.
They were, they were talking one time about a heli- heliport landing kind of thing early on.
That's, yeah, that.
Yeah.
Before my time.
I, I, is any other comments, Nate?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, on, on the heels of what Ken brought up before about opening floodgates. Um, a municipal facility and its definition, right? If the town, what prevents any town from determining that a a highway depot garage is now a municipal facility? Or a uh, recycling area or a garbage dump or anything that now is funded by the town through tax money, uh, through grants, whatever the case may be. And this is now a municipal building. Cause I, I, I would have reservations on, on that, right?
I was gonna.
Now the town decides, hey, I, we want this piece of property and we're going to build something there. That's not a emergency service like fire, police, an ambulance station. Which in my opinion, can fit in a residential district with a few little restrictions and nuances on sound and things along those lines and audible sirens and whatnot. So that would just be my one question that, you know, just to prevent the, the runaway decision to make anything municipal, right? The definition of municipal, municipal being government-owned or government-controlled.
Mm-hmm.
I recognize that we want to do this for a police station, but I think that term municipal building can be really
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask too, is, is there a definition for the municipal facility?
Right. Not, not to overcomplicate this.
Yeah, I'd have to check the code.
At, at, Chris, what you're saying, the municipal facility to me is a government-run facility. It could be anything. It could be a homeless shelter.
Right.
Uh, and you're the other question I had too is the, the reason we're doing this is because we want, the state police wants to move from the Route one hundred location to where?
Exactly. Basically right next door.
Right, right next door.
But they want a brand-new headquarters and they need to have.
They've outgrown.
And it, so, but that new location will be.
And it, so, but that new location will be in what current zone is it in?
It's in the, uh, it's current, it would be in the R eighty zone.
What's an R?
Okay, it's R's, yeah.
Yeah.
So just as an example, the Amawak Fire Station is in an R ten, Granite Springs Fire Station uh, is in neighborhood shopping in an R forty split. The Lincoln Dale Fire Station and ambulance are in R one twenty, Somers Library is in an R one twenty, the Somers Police Headquarters is in R one twenty, the Somers Fire Station is in an R forty, Elephant Hotel is in BHP, and the New York State Police Headquarters is in R eighty, now, Chris, you mentioned the um,
The highway.
Highway garage is actually in an OLI district.
Right.
And that, and that's permitted in that district, as of right, municipal use.
Understood, because that language is specific in the OLI.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but if we allow now for, quote, municipal buildings.
It could go in any neighborhood.
Right, and then, and if not defined, in my opinion, that can be interpreted by anyone to say, hey, this, this, albatross is now gonna be built here, and it aesthetically doesn't fit code, but the term municipal becomes overarching.
Okay.
Right, now, if you can counter that and say, no, it's actually pretty well-defined based on state code or something else along those lines, then I, I would be quite comfortable with saying, yeah, this is great, because, you know, we, we, we don't want to handcuff our own government, right, the local government, and being able to erect facilities that are determined to be required by the town, but I also don't want to give a blank check, to be able to do that, a pun intended, to be able to do that in a, in an area where there'll be a lot of public outcry, or, you know, decrease in property values, and, you know, we, we've seen in, in history eminent domain and other things that sort of disrupted natural, uh, environment for local residents, right? So that, that would be my, my concern uh, about, about ambiguous language or interpretation of municipal. I recognize that for this particular case, it's specific to a police uh, facility, I would have no problem, I'm sure no one would have an issue, would take issue with the, uh, police station, you know, in their neighborhood, um, it adds a, a layer of safety and security and things along those lines. But m- municipal means a lot of things.
Well, if you like, you'd like your Department of Highways, yeah, that'd be.
Correct, right, and while the language in the OLI where it's currently in allows it to be, we're now making language that I would interpret as being allowed in an R ten. And now, you know, while it's probably not feasible to squeeze a huge, um, you know, highway garage in an R ten, legally, nothing prevents it.
Right.
Because of the, of the language that we have, and, and again, maybe I'm, I'm speaking out, you know, like, nope, there's plenty of checks and balances to prevent that from happening, but I'm not aware of that.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And we brought that, that cleared up before I gave the okay.
You could define it further about buildings and not necessarily, I mean, like the Department of Highways has all this land devoted to, you know, salt and, and, and all these ex- exterior kind of uh, piles of construction material. You might be able to talk about just a, a specific building, I don't know if that.
Emergency service, maybe be specific.
Well, we, we're not gonna be making the zoning change that the town board would, but maybe in our, in our letter to them, can voice these um, very, very good concerns.
Yes, I think that's, that's basically what we're looking for, you don't have to.
They can.
You're not.
With the.
Yeah, yeah, and you're not. Not my job.
It's, it's possible they just never thought of that potential, right?
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I think the.
And, and most of our current uh, municipal buildings um, occurred, you know, the fire houses that occurred before our zoning.
True.
They predate them.
True, but you know, as the town grows, we're gonna, we're gonna, which it is, we're gonna need to look at emergency facilities, other municipal buildings.
And you never know.
And right, and we, we may have to increase the footprint of, of, of that to service our residents, and so just looking forward on a, on a, on a master plan level.
Right.
I just think some definitions to, you know, just prevent it from running away.
Yeah, good point.
Master plan.
Point, Ken, yeah.
Okay. Oh, boy.
Okay, yeah, there doesn't need to be unanimity.
No.
Just need to report back to uh, the town board.
Right.
This discussion.
Our thoughts.
Yeah, that's what they're looking for.
Yeah, and I'm just looking in E codes, it looks like the phrase municipal facilities appears one, two, three, four times already, so it might be good to look back at those instances, and then see if we do need to be addressing the statutory definition,
Mm-hmm.
To, to include those as well that are already in there, in stormwater pollution prevention plans, abbreviated approval process, principal uses, planned hamlet, and the principal uses OLI.
Right.
Any other comments? You, you have enough information.
I do, thank.
Several pages of, 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 I would say.
Sorry.
No, those are good points.
They are, yes.
Yeah.
That's.
Yes.
Whole point behind problems, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Our next meeting is September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Whoops. Steven.
September, summer's almost over, sorry, shouldn't have said.
That song goes.
Keep it to yourself.
September.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for tonight.